Please stand. May twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen, Gulf County Board of County Commissioners, down say.
Good morning to all. Would you join me in prayer, please? Father, thank you again for this wonderful day you've given us. Lord, we ask that you be with us this morning as this board goes about conducting the business of fine people of Guff County. Father, be with our law enforcement, be with all our EMS and first responders and last, have a very special day coming up here, Monday, Memorial Day, which honors all our military, veterans and all that's gave the ultimate sacrifice. Keep that in mind, would you? Lord, be with the great state of Florida, be with our United States of America, especially of all, be with all the people here in this county, S U D, in your precious name. Quinn, would you do the honors of the pledge, please?
(inaudible). The United States of America, the free republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just for all.
Okay. Again, in behalf of the board, thank you for taking time to come out this morning and be with us on the May twenty-third regular meeting of the Guff County Board of County Commissioners. If there's a time in the agenda at the end, public discussion, if there's anyone in the audience that wants to appear before the board, we graciously ask you, and this is right behind Mr. Joe Paul here, fill out one of these forms where we can have a record and for our Mrs. Roberts who keeps our meeting, if you want to speak when it comes time to the public, please, if you would, fill out one of these. All right, just a quick announcement before we get into our order of business. Next month, June, the regular meeting is scheduled for the twenty-seventh, but we are going to move that back to Monday, the twenty-sixth, and Mr. Crawford, our local news reporter over here, could make a note of that. And the reason behind it is a vast majority of us will be down at the FAC, the Florida Association of Counties, regular meeting, and that will last from Tuesday through Friday. But so we're going to back the meeting up. We won't meet on the twenty-seventh. We will meet the Monday. And prior meeting, we have canceled a meeting altogether, but we're not this year. We're just going to back it up a day. So keep, keep that in mind, any of you that want to come, and it'll be out on the website. All right, having said that, and Commissioner Barnes, good to see you this morning. We've got two former commissioners, Commissioner Yeager, Commissioner Barnes. Gentlemen, it's always a pleasure. Mr. Yeager's still with us, but Commissioner Barnes, it's truly a pleasure to have you here this morning.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, this time, we will move into starting the agenda. We will go to the consent agenda. As I've explained, just about every meeting, the consent agenda is where one vote covers multiple items. So if any of you in the audience have had any, an opportunity to look over the agenda and the consent agenda, if you have any questions concerning the consent agenda, would you please raise your hand and be recognized in the audience? All right, having none, now we will move into our staff. Does anyone in the staff have any questions, concerns with the consent agenda? Having none, come into the board. Is there any board members with any concerns or questions with the consent agenda? Any board members? All right, having none, I will entertain a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Macron, second by Commissioner Whitfield. We've already been to the audience. Is any other for discussion on? If not, if there's no opposition, motion passed five and oh to accept the consent agenda as presented. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move to item number four. We have a young lady that I have the opportunity to sit on a board. We meet in fact, I think Michael last Thursday, we were there. She represents the Florida Department of Transportation, District Three, which is located in Chipley, Ms. Virgie Bowen. Virgie, would you please come to the podium? Good morning. Good morning again.
Good morning.
Would you please, your name and?
Yes, I'm Virgie Bowen. I work with the District Three DOT office in Chipley.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning, Virgie. You have the floor.
Thank you. I'm here today to talk about the department's rural work program. I met with your staff on May the ninth to talk about things that you would like to have requested for our current cycle, for updating the department's five-year work plan. The year that we're talking about would be the new fifth year, which would be year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. So that would be five years out. Some of the things that were mentioned in our meeting that they would like to see requested was State Road Twenty-two, the bridge over Wautopo Creek. The bridge is older and State Road Twenty-two narrows as you come up to that bridge, and it can be a safety issue at high speeds. So they would like to request to see what the department could do to make that a safer bridge crossing there. So we'll bring that up. Also, too, it was mentioned that Gulf County is requesting two million dollars for revetment at Stump Pole. So we're going to bring that up again in our request to the production office. Then there were a couple of requests about ongoing projects, and I'm still trying to get updated information about the status of those projects.
All right.
So I can still get back with you on that. Last year, Mr. Chairman, you had mentioned requesting that the department began long-range planning for four-laning of State Road Seventy-One, and also long-range planning for a bridge crossing.
And Palascol River.
Correct. So, and if you like, we can continue to bring that forward again this year.
I wish you would.
Okay, all right, we can do that. And if there's any other comments or requests that you would like for me to bring before our production office, I'd be happy to, if you have any further comments.
Any board member? This is DOT. She's a lady that helps us, and DOT's been very gracious to Guff County.
Well, we, we like Guff County. I like coming down here. I had to get up very early this morning, but.
All right, well, that's good. You can get back.
That's correct.
Still mow your grass this afternoon.
That's correct. Actually, it's very easy traveling this early in the morning. There's very little traffic, so, so that is an advantage.
Any questions for the board? All right, we recognize Commissioner Whitfield.
Red lights come under any of this setting, or could it?
It could.
We need some, and it looked like it may be then before we get them.
Okay.
I have stated the locations before. Three eighty-six and seventy-one, and what's that other orange, you know, Church Avenue, the IGA, Mr. McDaniel, and seventy more.
Okay, there's an IGA there at that intersection.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
Okay, I know that the first thing that the safety office will do is conduct a warrant study to see if it's justified for a signal. Do you know if that's been done in the past?
I think it has, and didn't show enough traffic, but there's been a great change since then.
Okay.
And if we look in three or four, five years down the road, there's no telling what it'll be by then. So I think we should try to start now. We may get what we need a little bit after we need it.
Okay. Okay.
Yep. Mr. Rogers?
The sidewalk that's ongoing at Saint Joe Beach.
That was one of the requests the staff asked me to check into, and I'm just having trouble getting my schedule when I'm in the office to match up with the project manager where I can find out what's going on on that. But that is one of the things I have on my list to check and follow up on what the status is.
Thank you. Any other? Virgie?
Okay.
Thank you. Looking forward to seeing you in Tallahassee, and you have a safe trip back to Chipley.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much. All right, we're going to change just a little bit. We're going to drop down to item number nine and ten, and we will address those next. And it's concerns the Willis Landing and the Indian Bayou abandonment. Mr. Novak, we have Deseret representatives with us this morning. Gentlemen, thank you for taking time to come down and be with us this morning. Mr. Novak, would you address this, please?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. The first item, number nine, is the Willis Landing Boat Ramp. As we've discussed in your previous meetings, we've been in discussions with Deseret to figure how to, they've kindly offered to convey that over to the county. In the last two months, we've been working with your engineers to try to come up with a survey and a legal description of what would be agreeable with Deseret for what they would convey over. Ultimately, in front of each of you, behind the blue tab on your dais, there is a quit claim deed and a survey, as well as a legal description. Our engineers have put together the survey from the shape files that Deseret and the county have been working from, and in talking to Wes and Michael, they're going to go through it once more and ratify and approve the actual deed and meets and bounds. But what we're asking for today is your affirmative vote accepting the conveyance of that, and what approximately is about two point nine eight acres that leads up to the Brothers River and the Water's Edge. So you'll have a survey there. The deed is there. We've gone back and forth on the language, and I believe everything's in proper form and order. And I'd ask the commission, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them. Otherwise, if we can have a motion of the commission to accept that conveyance, once Deseret signs off on the deed.
Gentlemen, any questions for the attorney?
Should I make the motion, Mr.?
We have a motion by Commissioner Whitfield, second, second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion? This is on the landing. Do you want any audience, any concerns? Not? There's no opposition? Motion passed five and oh. Now we'll address the abandonment. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, the blue tab on your dais has a resolution that we've drafted. Under your policy, you adopted back in two thousand and fourteen in May, you have a, an abandonment policy that you have followed the last three months. It started with authorizing the county to start the process, advertise the public hearing. As you all recall, back on March twenty-eighth, you had a public hearing for this proposed abandonment. At that meeting, you all voted to move forward, authorizing it, and what we've done is we've now prepared the final step, which is actually a resolution of this board that will take the affirmative step of abandoning Indian Bayou Road. We have posted the notices on the property. We have notified the property owners, including Deseret and Wimaco Timber, and today is the final step. Once you consider this resolution that I'm going to read, we'll advertise it in the paper. That's the final step. We'll then convey all the paperwork over to Ms. Norris and her staff. It'll become public record, and the county will formally abandon Indian Bayou Road. And it reads as follows, "A resolution of Gulf County Board of County Commissioners for authorizing vacation and abandonment of Indian Bayou Road pursuant to Gulf County abandonment policy, with noticed public hearing and approving vote of the Board of County Commission, authorizing and directing to county officials, officers, employees, and agents to take such actions as may be necessary or desirable in furtherance of the abandonment directives herein, providing for authority, providing an effective date." And I'll hit the high points unless the commission wants me to read the whole thing.
Oh, no.
"The commission has adopted the said policy, which cites in part the basis authority for Gulf County's consideration and approval of abandonments under Florida Statute One Twenty-five. The commission has reviewed and discussed in a public hearing on March twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen." It, the whereas, and it reads as follows, "That Gulf County Board of County Commissioners today, on May twenty-third, hereby grant and request the abandonment with the following conditions. Gulf County, through the Planning Department, shall notice a published of the adoption of this resolution, one time in one issue of the newspaper of general circulation published in Gulf County. The county, through the clerk's court, clerk of court, have recorded in the official records of Gulf County proof of publication of the notice of intent, the resolution adopted by the board, and the notice of adoption of such resolution. And the county shall provide the county attorney copies of the recorded documents vacating the right of way, and who shall then distribute the affected two contiguous property owners' parties, as well as the Planning Department and Public Works. It's set up for today, for the chairman's signature, in consideration of your approving vote."
Right. Gentlemen?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Macron, second, second by Commissioner Whitfield. Any further board discussion on the abandonment of the Indian Bayou Road? Anyone in the audience? Having none? Any opposition? Motion passed five and oh. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Gentlemen? Thank you for taking time to come down this morning. Ladies and gentlemen, we have one more prior to going into our county business. We have a public hearing on a Gulf to Gadsden. It's a freight logistics zone, and Mr. Yeager, you have the honors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning to everyone. Just briefly, last week, we had placed a, a plan in each one of your, his box, and that's the culmination of a grant that was applied for a few months ago through DEO, to write a strategic plan for the corridor, rail corridor that goes from Gulf to Gadsden County. It involved all four counties, so it was a, a, a group effort. We've had several meetings of which the, the chairman has attended, and, and the plan that we presented to you is basically pretty close to the culmination of this particular project. And one of the requirements of the grant was to present this plan to you and to get an affirmation that, that you would, agreed with the plan. This plan does not bind the county to anything, but what it does do is establish a, a plan that you can go to DOT for some specific dollars if some, something breaks loose on that rail corridor. And so that's the advantage of this plan and doing this plan. It was about a sixty-thousand-dollar work. The ARPC was involved deeply in that, and, and we're at the point to where we would certainly like to, to adopt that strategic plan so we can forward it on to the state. And then if anything comes up about requesting further grant dollars to develop some properties along that rail corridor.
Yeah.
We'll have it.
All right, Mr. Yeager, this information, was it a free trade zone? Will it be tied in with this?
There's, there's a couple of zones that could be tied into this corridor. One of them is the Panama City Zone that the port has, and one of them is the Tallahassee Airport that has, has those zones. And so that will, this, this plan will give the opportunity to tie those in, and so anything coming on that rail corridor would certainly benefit from that aspect.
All right, so what do you, what do you need out of?
So I think what we need is a, is a motion to, to adopt the plan for Gulf County, and we will forward that.
All right.
Forward that on. Franklin County has already had their meeting, and they've adopted it, and they're waiting on Gadsden and Liberty.
Liberty.
And Gulf. So that's, that's where we're at.
That's good. So Franklin's beat us to the draw.
Franklin beat us.
Oh, man. That's good. All right, all right. Okay, gentlemen. I'll entertain a motion to you.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Thank you. Second, Commissioner Rogers, any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience?
And if anybody would like to see this plan, actually, Leanna has printed a few up. Leanna, you have them. So if anybody would like a copy of that plan from the audience or anybody, we've got a few extras, and we will certainly, if we haven't already provided that to the clerk's office, we'll get one to the clerk's office.
Good deal.
Thank you, Mr.
All right, thank you. Any, no one in the audience, any opposition? No opposition? Motion passed five and oh to move forward. All right, ladies and gentlemen, just caught up here. All right, at this time, we will move into the county staff business. Mr. Butler, do you have anything before the board this morning?
Mr. Chairman, it looks like everything came in in time. Everything's in the consent agenda, so at this point in time, I have nothing. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the first issue, I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention on the commission, with Beacon Hill Park coming to hopefully completion soon. The county's received a lot of inquiries about renting the park or using it, and I just, working with Mr. Butler and Mr. Hammond, we're working on a county park policy, as well as a rental policy, so that the, we can present to you at the next month's meeting so you all have some structure or some guidelines on how you can move forward and get input from the commission as to how you wish to proceed on that, so you can organize. And in the past, people have come up and presented to you on various parks. There's really no uniform approach to it, so we're hoping we can get something in front of you, both an application and a policy going forward. Second is to update you all. I know Warren was just up here, but just yesterday, we finalized our grant consultant with the Restore Consultant contract, so we're pleased to report that we have them signed and sending them back to the county for the chairman's signature. They had a workshop last week with the county staff, which was extremely productive, and they're already underway working with the county on our Restore projects.
Good deal.
The third item is with regards to our recent meetings. We've had some productive meetings with Saint Joe Company. I just wanted to report to the commission. We may have met with Mr. Gonzales last month and again this month, and in, from those discussions, they've directed me to work with their Saint Joe attorney, Ken Bork. I've spoken with Mr. Bork with regards to structuring a private-public partnership with Saint Joe Company. We're in the final stages of coming up with the language that we can present to this commission for you all to consider. We hope to invite them to that meeting when we present that public-private partnership to you all. But what I'd ask for today is the authority to move forward, finalize the language, and get it in front of the chairman. Obviously, we have some time-sensitive issues that we're all working towards, but we'd like to present and get a ratification of the public-private partnership so we can come back to you with some projects in the near future. We're excited about the opportunity. They've been extremely open with their time and their thoughts, and we're hopeful we're going to come back to you all with some projects. But Mr. Bork and I need, obviously, the authority for the signatures under that public-private partnership to move forward. It'll be a general umbrella language. There'll be nothing with specificity with regards to projects, but it'll give the county and Saint Joe the ability to move forward at meetings and discuss some of these future projects.
Good. All right, you want that now?
If I could, sir, yes.
All right, gentlemen, we have a motion.
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Macron, second, second by Commissioner Quinn. All right, any further board discussion on this public-private property, private partnership? Anyone in the audience, any questions on it? Okay. Anyone in the audience? All right, any opposition? None. Motion passed five and oh. Mr. Attorney, get with their attorney.
Yes, sir. We're working on it. Happy to bring it to you, Mr. Chairman, and that's all I have for this time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hammond?
Two quick things. Bid sixteen, seventeen, twenty-two, inmate commissary services. This is, you had to go out for bid. The contract had expired with our current provider, who's been our provider for ten years. We had three responses, and the highest and best response was McDaniel Supply Company out of, I think it's Jessup, Georgia, Jessup, Georgia, and that's the same company we've had for the last ten years. So that'd be, that'd be my recommendation, that we continue with them.
By the way, gentlemen.
Is that any relation to you?
Absolutely. Not to my knowledge. I don't know, you know. When that Civil War got over, there was a lot of my family coming back, so I may have relatives everywhere. But anyway, you're, again, back to business. The recommendation.
Is the high and best bid of the three, which is McDaniel Supply from Jessup, Georgia.
They've been serving you for how many years?
About ten years.
Ten years, all right. Gentlemen?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner. On any further board discussion?
No, for my part, sir.
Ah, anyone, any audience? None? Any opposition?
Opposition.
Motion passed four and one. Right.
I'd like to explain that maybe in a stick-up procedure, if I understood you right, there's a high bid, and I just always have a problem with that.
I, I didn't explain.
But I knew it was going to pass, but I would have to.
I apologize. I did not explain. This is a, this is a situation where the high bid is actually good. This is, this is a company that sells honey buns and aspirin and toilet paper and toiletries and things of that nature to, to inmates, long-term inmates, more than just a day or two. And the county inmate welfare fund gets the proceeds of that, just like you, you know. So the higher the percentage that the county is, is actually good in this case, because we, we make more money off selling the product. So it, it works, low bid's usually good when we're buying something, but in this case, it's, they give us more of the money back. So, you know, so we get forty cents basically on every dollar back, where one company was only going to give us ten cents on the dollar, and one company is going to give us like twenty-one cents on the dollar.
Thank you for that, sir, and with that, I withdraw my, my vote.
Madam Carter? Over in the minutes that Commissioner Whitfield has changed his vote. Okay, all right. Thank you.
I apologize for the confusion.
All right.
The only other thing, and I'll wait till, till Yeager talks, is we're still on pins and needles with the governor, but we could not have had a better legislative session with, with the triant legislation, the way that it came out with the eastern floating dry dock and turning basin dredging that came out, the six million dollars for the rail project that came out, four hundred thousand for the Stormville Creek Fire Station that came out. So really, really excited about it and look forward to the governor signing.
Mr. Hammond, thank you. And let me tell you, ladies and gentlemen, I've said this in the past, and we were there. I think Mr. Yeager probably was there for a couple of weeks, spent more time in Tallahassee than he did here in Port Saint Joe. But if you're not there when there's a slice of pie, you won't get any pie. In Guff County, we were, they knew, the senators and the representatives knew we were there, and we were fighting hard, and we landed a lot for this county. And I want to thank Mr. Yeager and Mr. Hammond and all the ones, Commissioner Rogers, for his participation. We did good. We surely did. Mr. Hammond, do you have anything else? You still have the floor, sir.
The only thing I'd have, if, if we needed to talk anymore about that public-private partnership, and if we don't, that's fine. We will come back to you before we, we proceed on any project that's going to cost money. But, but we have two things pressing right now.
Now, I can talk a little bit about this. It's going to open up for us to get that road to the big head. I see we have Eugene Porter's director here, and who you got, who are you, Eugene?
Craig. Yeah, he's Craig's.
Yeah.
Craig Swilly, okay.
Well, the, the immediate, the immediate.
All right, please, Mr. Hammond.
The, the immediate thing, probably the first thing we'll bring back to you is a plan to, to work in cooperation with Saint Joe to put a road in to access the, the head wall for Mistress Swilly's operation and the port's operation, which will also provide access to the backside, to what I would call the north side, of the eastern shipbuilding site that, that's also there. That'll be probably the next thing we come to you. That, that will be the, that's the big enchilada. That's basically what we've been working on for the last six months, steering this triant money, steering this floating dry dock money, the things that's going to bring good, high-paying, blue-collar jobs back to Port Saint Joe. So those two items are basically what we're working on, and that's, that, the road will probably be the first thing we bring to you, what your participation will be. And then soon thereafter, hopefully, we'll have a, a, an agreement with Eastern and Saint Joe, probably a tripartite agreement moving forward on that site.
All right, sir.
For, so everybody, Mr. Swilly's in, in contract with the port authority on that property to ship out of the port, and everybody knows.
This, this would be to provide access from, in some way, we, and we have a drawing right now that would actually come in from the old, where the chip trucks came in from the construction lot on the Highland View side. But, but either under the overpass is probably the preferred route for him, or around by the old chip gate, what I call it. But provide access from the port site, which is the old Arizona Chemical site, to the head wall where he can ship his product out.
Okay. All right, sir. Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Mr. Sumner?
Thanks, sir.
Larry, I'll see you on down the line, okay? Good. Catherine? Everything, sir?
I just got one thing. Limited maintenance agreements. We navigated the waters with Deseret and got all of the ones we needed from them. But I found where Saint Joe still owns some property where we have ditches on that we've maintained, and I need to reach out to Dave Harrelson at Saint Joe, and I need a motion from the board to be able to do that work, Mr. Butler, to get about fourteen or fifteen signed that we can do ditches on Saint Joe property. It's around the big, big ditch around Jones Homestead area. There's some ditches in Highland View. There's some.
Okay, okay. Now, now I know where you're at. Okay, I didn't know if you was way out there.
The, the ditches are on Saint Joe property. They border properties and subdivisions, but with the same.
You just want a limited maintenance. Is that what you're reaching out for?
That's right.
Sure, to help the people in these areas. All right, sir. All right, gentlemen. We've done this numerous times. I have a motion for this.
So move.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. I hear a second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner. Quinn, any further board discussion? All right, anyone in the audience? Having none? Is any opposition? Motion passed five and oh. Get, or get with Mr. Butler and take care of that for me. Anything else, sir? All right. Collinsworth?
More, Mr. Chairman.
More, Mr. Chairman. Just want to give a quick update on the landfill. We have a meeting set up with DEP, June, uh, sixth, seventh, sixth, seventh, uh, to close the landfill. We got grass finally growing on the landfill, so we're very close to the end. So hopefully we can...
Thank you.
Thank you for y'all's work, Lee.
I got a little rain, and that brought my grass. Alright, thank you, Lee. Thank you so much for the report. Alright, while we're still over here, uh, Mr. Jaeger?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm like Michael, I don't want to jinx anything, so I don't want to talk too in depth about the legislation. I think the governor has another few days left before he is required to either sign the legislation, or veto the legislation, or don't sign it, let it become law. Uh, we're, we're hopeful, and all of our contacts say that we, we, we are in good shape. Uh, briefly, I will just, I will just say that we did do very well on the, not only on all the other, uh, legislative appropriations, but also on the Triumph legislation, uh, for all the counties. And all the counties are proud of us. We had several that called us wanting to know if there was anything that they could do, but they were late to the game. You had already taken the lead. And so that, that, that worked out well, not only for Gulf County, but each county. Uh, each county will, uh, as you've heard, will receive a percentage, uh, five percent of that first bit of money. So, uh, you know that five percent of that first bit of money is gonna be spent within your boundaries of your county. And each county knows that, so that's about fifteen million for each county, uh, that you know that you're gonna receive. So, uh, there's a lot of good things happening. And what I don't want us to get in, I don't want us to ignore the other sixty percent that Triumph has. If we have larger projects or, or as we work with the school boards and the cities and, and other elected boards that we will be required to do through, through this legislation, uh, we need to work together to make sure that we, uh, also access those other, uh, pots of money and that other sixty percent that's still in Triumph legislation. So it doesn't prevent us from getting more than those percentages. We just need to make sure that we, we, we work to, to that goal. So, uh, that's where we're at. I attended the, the Triumph Board meeting, the first one since that legislation come out.
That was when, yesterday?
That was yesterday.
Okay.
Wasn't a whole lot done, because they're actually waiting on, uh, one of the things that we got put in that legislation was two more board members, Triumph Board members. One of those, uh, or, or possibly two of them will come from either Gulf Franklin or, or...
Wacala.
Wacala, uh, and a possibility of Walton. The way the legislation was, was written, uh, uh, they said the four least populous counties. And what we were trying to do is get the, the three least populous counties on, on the eastern end. However, we know that we will at least get one of those appointments over this way, and we believe that Gulf County's in a strong position. I've heard a lot of different names, it, it doesn't really, I, I don't think it matters a whole lot to all of us. What we just wanted to make sure is we got an appointee from our county or from this particular three-county region. And so I'll be coming to you, uh, more often, uh, very shortly, once the governor signs that legislation. Once the Triumph Board actually meets and starts to talk about an application process and a process of, of what the criteria will be for these projects, I'll be coming to you more. And we'll have to get more deeply involved. One of the requirements, as I said, is you, you will have to, uh, reach out to the other elected boards within your county, uh, to submit those projects. And then, and you will have the opportunity to, to actually prioritize those projects or recommend those projects. And the legislation, uh, actually says that, that your projects that are recommended through this board, uh, will take priority. So, uh, we, we've, we've got a lot in there and, and, uh, we're, we're excited about going forward. It's gonna be, it's gonna be exciting, so.
Good. Uh, Mr. Jaeger? I followed closely on this, and I know you spearheaded it back when, twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, somewhere along in there, and started the ball rolling. And as he stated, Gulf County represented Wacala and Franklin. Uh, and we had other counties that would come to Mr. Jaeger, and also we had Mr. Hammond, Mr. Holly, and say, "Direct us which way we need to go." But the, the big thing is, you heard him say a while ago, the county's the eight counties. It's not a percentage you get. You get, Escambia County gets the same amount of money as Gulf County and Bay County. So, the little fella, it's not a percentage. We get the same as they get, so.
It's, it's not dependent on the population or, or anything else.
No, nothing to do with that. And we want to thank you again, and the Commissioner, uh, Senators, Munderd, especially Senator George Gaynor, and a good friend of mine and all of ours down in the state of Florida from Pinellas County, it's Senator LaVala. He spent a lot of time up here in Gulf County. He was real instrumental, along with our representatives, Trumbull and, uh, Ozzy Bashir. So, uh, join ever, with everybody working together and standing tall and, uh, fighting, we came out alright. Mr. Jaeger, any question? Anyone from the board have any?
Yeah.
I want to do one more thing, and I'd mention it to Warren. Came up actually at our ARPC meeting on Thursday. We, we would like, uh, to host, uh...
We will, right here.
Or, uh, at, at least the three counties, but possibly all eight. Uh, there's an effort, uh, between the West Florida Regional Planning Council, Lappleshaw Regional Planning Council, to help vet regional projects for the sixty percent, not the forty percent. Uh, not the, not our dedicated share, but for the regional projects. And there, there certainly could be some benefit to that, and we would like to host it and, and Warren to be the point for that. So, we would like to get the board's blessing for that. Chairman has any, anything else on?
That's good, that'd be good. Any question for any of the board members here? Man, that'd be great, we could host it right here in Gulf County where, where it all got started, right over here in the EOC building. Mr. Jaeger? In your spare time, why don't you work on some of that? Alright, thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Leanna, do you have anything? Alright, thank you, dear. Let's drift on over this. Mr. Paul? Everything for the board, sir?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, sir.
Just two quick things. Uh, Mr. Jaeger's spare time is usually in my office. So if you need him, you can always find him in there.
Oh, okay.
But what we're doing, uh, just a, just a brief history, he just asked me to, uh, bring this up. But on the twenty-second of June, we are planning on the dedication of the Beacon Hill Park up there. And, uh, we've got several things going on. We've got the signage being worked for the, uh, unveiling of the sign for Chris Blasham Way. We got the first draft of the sign yesterday, which was beautiful. And, uh, Mr. Trailer and Mr. Jaeger are working hard on getting that done. We have actually sent the sign to his mother, just to kind of get her to look at it and make sure that she's okay with what we're doing. We have not set a time yet, I believe we're looking at, you know, mid-morning on the twenty-second. But as soon as we get that together, we'll come, come back and get the word out to everybody. But we'd like to have a great turnout from Gulf County, uh, for the commissioners, the veterans, and the people of Gulf County to see what's been done with this park. Uh, if you haven't been out there and see what's going on, get out there and get a look at it. It is coming together, and it's really looking beautiful. Also, on behalf of the veterans of Gulf County, I want to thank you for allowing us to have the presentation at the last meeting for the Vietnam veterans. I've had a lot of people call and, and wanted to personally thank the commission for allowing that to happen at your commission meetings, and for that, we say thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. One minute. Commissioner Rogers?
Yes, uh, on a note on the park, um, the veterans and the, uh, American Legion, uh, Sunday are going to have a, uh, ceremony out there for Memorial Day.
This Sunday?
This Sunday at, uh, twelve-thirty, uh, and as many people as can. I would like to see y'all go out there and honor the veterans for that. Lot of works went in out there, um, um, Billy Trailer, uh, the PDC, Mr. Jaeger, um, and the veterans have put a lot of time and effort out there. And, uh, I'm real proud of what they've done out there. Uh, so all y'all that can, please come. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Whitfield?
Just a brief revenue update. Up through the month of April, we collected six hundred and two thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-two cent on bill runs. That brings us up of forty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars above this time last year. And it seems to progressively increase a little bit each month. The average of monthly average.
Right, sir. Questions from Mr. Whitfield? Thank you, Houston. Brown. Adams? Cherry? Good morning, Ms. Rhonda.
Good morning, sir. I don't have anything today.
Alright, Madam Clark?
No, sir, no having.
There you go. Young lady? Alright, Sheriff, you get to do the mop up, come on.
Chain there, but, uh, just wanted to, uh, say good morning and, uh, invite all of you to our law enforcement memorial ceremony. Will be next Wednesday, May the thirty-first at ten AM on the courthouse, uh, steps in front of Gulf County Courthouse. It's be our time, about twenty-minute ceremony to remember the law enforcement officers that have been killed in the state of Florida in the line of duty in two thousand and sixteen. Um, again, it'll be a short, short ceremony there, and, uh, just remembering those ones that's paid the ultimate sacrifice on the law enforcement front.
It's May thirty-first.
May the thirty-first at ten AM.
Ten AM.
Gulf County Courthouse, first step.
Sheriff, I saw you up in Washington, and that was very...
Yes, sir.
Awful of you to recognize that family.
Yes, sir. It's been, uh, sixty-seven years is long enough, and, uh...
It is.
Time to, uh, get him, uh, the recognition that he needs, and, uh, uh, the family was very appreciative of it, and glad we were able to, uh, do that for him.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Sheriff, you was able to bring it forth in Washington DC too, was you not?
What's that, sir?
The recognition of this officer was?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And his name is on the National...
It's on there.
...Law Enforcement Memorial, uh, wall there in Washington DC. Um, again, killed in nineteen fifty in line of duty here in Gulf County. Fortunately, our only officer that's been killed in the line of duty.
Yes.
But, uh, he's on the walls in Tallahassee, and now is on the wall in, uh...
I appreciate that, sir.
...Washington DC. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, sir. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we will be moving into board business. And, uh... Commissioner Whitfield, would you want to begin, or Commissioner Quinn? It's, or you want, it doesn't matter.
I'm the toughest, I'll be happy to begin.
Alright, sir.
If you would like, I'm still on this mic. I just have two or three things to bring up and...
Alright, sir, you have the floor.
Okay, sir. Um, our last workshop was inadvertently counseled some way. And I've asked Mr. Butler to respond to that. I know within about two to three minutes of it, I was getting called. We were able to jump right back on it, and five minutes, everybody was back on it, and we was able to get up with everybody. It, it changed and, uh, got back on course. But, uh, we do not know why that happened. And I, I don't want to kill a gnat with a sledgehammer. But I do think it needs to be addressed, and, uh, I would leave it to Mr. Butler. I know they looked, and there's no suspicion on anybody in this courthouse or anybody do. But this can be done for anywhere, and I think it's gonna be a thing that's become, become more prevalent in the future. And it could, I don't see how it was anything to do with the meeting that we were having. I don't believe that at all. Even if it was a prank, it was a bad one. And I just think the people need to know that we're gonna be watching out for this, and we're gonna be taking steps to keep this from happening. I've had similar things going with my own computer and, uh, stuff that I receive lately, and it makes it more important to me than maybe it normally would. But I would like to hear Mr. Butler just, uh, respond to that, he knows what I'm talking about.
Commissioner Whitfield? Everything you said was correct. I think you were in Walmart, it was on a Friday, you called me, you got a cancellation of the upcoming weight limit meeting to do with the truckers. We got on it, come, in, in digging into it. We, um, it came from one email address. Uh, the owner of that email address happened to be in a dentist's office at that point in time, which ruled out that person was not in the building. Uh, Dennis, he's listening, he's over in the equipment room, he listened to this meeting. But Dennis looked, looked at the cameras, there was nobody in this building at that point in time when that, when that cancellation was made. Well, we don't think it's anyone pranking, it was just a computer glitch or something, uh, that happened. Cannot explain it. IT cannot explain it. But it did not come from my computer, did not come from iPad or phone. It happened. And so I say again, I, I don't think any of us thinks someone was playing a prank on anyone. Um, there's a lot of people on that list, uh, that upcoming meeting, truckers and county commissioners and everybody else. And we all, we, a lot of us got cancellations as quick as we could, within minutes, we started getting that undone. Uh, I did have conversation with Miss Cherry. She, she left home, came to the office on, on that day, 'cause we closed that day. Uh, got back on the computer, made sure that everyone got a notice that it was not canceled. So we can't explain what happened, uh, it must have been a computer glitch, and don't know how to explain that.
I just want to go on the record, just thinking we ought to make sure, look into this. That is not my description and people I talked to of a computer glitch. Uh, it's just not the definition of what one is. And what bothers me, if it came from the outside, it possibly will again. And like I say, I'm ready to just leave it lay, if it's rather, I want everybody to know about it. Mainly that it was made public, and in the minutes. And if you think it does need anything but wait and see, I'm fine with all of that. But I felt an obligation that the people know that this has happened. And, uh...
It...
I don't owe any guarantees.
It's not funny, but I think we could probably point to the Russians, other than that, I don't know.
Thanks, sir.
There you go.
I have, uh...
Sheriff has the floor.
Okay, sir. I have one other thing, and I ask sometimes for unanimous consent, and I want to make sure that we understand it. Because I, I believe a couple of times I have been, uh, misunderstood on some things. But what I'm talking about now, I'd ask unanimous consent on looking into cleaning culverts. Now, that's not very exciting, I know. But I would like unanimous consent for Mr. Butler and Mr. Mark to let us authorize them to look into this all the way up to the point of purchasing. Let them decide what we need, or if we need it. And, and authorize them up, I'd say, uh, twelve thousand dollars. Now, I've done a lot of research on this, I find them from eight thousand to twenty thousand. But whatever they are, they beat two long-handled shovels in a fire truck. It's a problem that nobody, uh, says much about, but it's a problem, it's going to get worse and worse and worse. I don't know how each person's district is. This is not for me, it's for the whole county. And if, if, um, Mr. Mark comes up with something, or if he says, you know, I don't think we need to do this, that'd be fine with me. Because he's still gonna be asked to clean them. And if Mr. Butler is the one that can basically say, well, we might can do this money from here or from here. But I'm for this board, giving them that authority to take care of that. And whatever their answer is, will be fine with me, I will have done my part. And it's not for my district, it's for everywhere. Uh, and it, but I do know it's a serious problem in, in my district, and it's been let go for... And I don't mean that in a bad way, but you know, it's things you don't see. You'll hear about the potholes and stuff, but unless you get a little flash flood, you don't hear about the, the, uh, culvert's not working. But drainage and culverts is something that I feel we really need to be working on. And if, so, I would leave it to you. If you, all you have to do to stop it, if you have an objection to it, we'll change it, go to a motion. If you have no objection, they can go ahead with the information I give them under Robert's rules. Thank you.
Right, sir. Question?
I'll go along with you, Mr. Freddie, on, on this. If you want, uh, get done, and Mark come back with a recommendation, and I'll be, you know, whatever they say, and I'll be fine with, if y'all want to.
Thank you. Let me...
Do we need a motion?
Oh, he, he's just asked to do this. Commissioner Rogers, and then I'm gonna go to Commissioner.
Yeah, um, my district's the same way, Mr. Whitfield. Uh, you know, I have problems everywhere.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and, you know, there's no quick solution to any of it. I mean, it's, and it's, uh, will turn into expense, uh, you know, manpower, because you've got to clean out either side of the ditch before you can actually clean the culvert. But, yeah, whatever we can do to make it work better, I'm all for it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, I, I just agree with him. What have we got to do to make, you know, make it happen? I'm on board with it.
Yeah, let me, uh, I want to work on this. One of the big projects was out in the Overstreet area, this has been, uh, a few years back. But a lot of our cases, uh, let me say, we have with culverts, people call saying, well, the water's standing. You go examine this, and of course, these two gentlemen, and, uh, Mr. Chris Wood, who does most of the field work. There's a lot of cases, we've got it where the ditches are lower than the culverts, and the water just won't jump uphill. And so it's caught between two culverts. But yes, occasionally, now where vehicles have caved in a pipe... But yes, occasionally, now where vehicles have caved in a pipe, an old pipe is given away, an old metal pipe is ga, is gave way and the culverts will be filled up, most of the time, we can clean them out. We have, and a lot of times the areas where you're in, it's, they're just low areas and you're going to experience some water for a while, but we probably, Mr. Gotham, uh, I know, I work quite a bit, which you're well aware of, with uh, Mr. Wood and he spends a lot of time all over this county and that's one thing I'm asking, you know, if you see any culverts, if you can do it with inmate labor, fine, if you can do it with the excavator, whatever you can do. If you need a fire truck, we've got enough fire trucks in Gulf County to, I think we can spring them on a loose and that, if we, if the culvert needs flushing out. But why don't you look into that and maybe come back and give this board a report on there, I think we're all in agreement that we do have a problem in all the districts, okay, sir? All right, Mr. Whitfield, you still have the floor, Commissioner Whitfield, you still have the floor.
All I would add is uh, I think we can do better than pulling a two hundred thousand dollar fire truck out of service to clean a culvert. These guys are foot soldiers out there, they carry the load and all I want is them to have a tool to do it with. If it doesn't improve their performance and their ability to do it, it makes it more difficult on them, that's all right. Whatever y'all come back with is all right, you have my opinion and where I stand on it and so I'll, I rest. Chairman, that's all I have today.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner McCrone.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we finally got an amnesty day, uh. Mr. Novak, what, is that June, did you say June the tenth on that?
June the tenth, the transfer station.
Uh, the transfer, transfer station and uh, uh, the only other thing I have, I just wanted to mention that uh, appreciate the work that uh, Director Raphael has done on the Port Authority. Uh, appreciate Mr. Hammond and uh, uh, Mr. Jaeger on their work, uh, securing the money for uh, the float and dry dock and, and moving forward with that in brighter days. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
That's all, uh, Mr. Graff. Uh, Waste Pro is supposed to contact you and set up to where you can run a ad in your paper here for this amnesty day and it, and it's going to be held out at five points. Not the landfill, it's the transfer station now. All right, sir. Uh, Commissioner Quinn, is that all for you, Commissioner, Commissioner Quinn?
Yes, sir, just one thing, uh.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, just for Mr. Novak, just want to ask a question, uh, where are we on the uh, the teardowns on those blighted properties?
Yeah, Commissioner, um, we reached out to Jim Anderson last week, um, and just inquired as to the status of those teardowns that you all approved. They've signed all the paperwork over a month and a half, two months ago for the whole homeless, so the county has all the paperwork it needs as you've done in the past. Um, and, and asking him last week, I think they were trying to work out the final logistics, he, he, what's going to be burned, what's going to use as rip rap for the county and what's going to be hauled. I think the final issue is they had to work out their issue for the tipping fees that they had negotiated with Waste Pro. I think that they had negotiated a lower price because it was a, a community contribution to the city. Um, so we're waiting to hear from Jim and once we do, uh, Mark and Lee have already indicated to us that they're on standby, ready to go to help with those three houses.
Appreciate it, thank you. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir, Commissioner Rogers.
Yeah, a couple of things, uh, we'd already covered uh, some of the things I had, uh, thanks to Mr. Paul about the DFW Sunday. Uh, in my district, I have the intercoastal and I've talked to some of the staff. Uh, got complaints about the wake zone and uh, we've, understand we have approval for Highland View and White City to have no wake zone signs put up. Uh, I've asked them to check and see if we could get that for Overstreet also. Uh, unfortunately, some of the larger boats will not slow down when they go by and it causes a problem for the people that live on the intercoastal. Highland View, unfortunately, you know, you got people waiting out there fishing and uh, a big boat comes through, uh, could cause a problem. Um, I know Mr. Raphael back there knows that it causes problems with his boats tied to the dock when they come through and wash them halfway up on the hill. They will go ahead and get all of that lined up for us, try to get that solved.
Commissioner, uh, Rogers, you're correct about that town of White City especially, I mean, uh, correction, we're White City and I've seen it there and Overstreet. But will that be through FWC or the Corps, the Coast Guard, whatever it is, you take care of that for us.
It'd be the Coast Guard.
Good to know, all right, sir. That'll do me. Anything else? Thank you, sir. Chair has nothing this morning. All right, ladies and gentlemen, this time, we're going to move on to item number eight, it's the opening of sealed bids. And Mrs. Rock, Madam Clerk, are you going to do the honors there?
Yes, sir, we'll take care of it for you.
All right, thank you, you have the floor.
Good morning. We're here today to open a couple of bids, first bid is sixteen seventeen twenty-four for the paving of Old Bay City Road Phase Three. First bid is Gulf Coast Utility Contractors. We have a base bid of uh, one million five hundred and five thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
That's from Gulf Coast. Is that correct?
Um. One Gulf Coast, yes, sir. Gulf Coast, yes.
One million five hundred?
One million.
Pocket change, okay.
Five hundred and five thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
Thank you, dear, all right.
Next bid is North Florida Construction Incorporated. Base bid is one million two hundred and sixty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents.
That's the base bid.
Base bid. Next bid is Robertson Roberts Incorporated. Base bid is one million one hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty cents. And the last bid for sixteen seventeen twenty-four is CW Roberts Contracting Incorporated. Uh, we'll report that they did not write the bid number on the outside of the envelope. Base bid is one million three hundred and thirty-five thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty-five cents. That concludes all the bids for this one, the next bid is sixteen seventeen twenty-five.
Sir, you want us to address this one before we go to the others? What's this, what's your direction over there?
If you could table that bid, I give staff time to review and engineers time to review.
There we go, that's what we're, on this bid, bid number of. We were just opening, no one's looking at them.
Sixteen seventeen twenty-four.
Yeah, twenty-four. All right, I hear a motion that we table this and give the staff and the people that need to look over these bids and make sure they're all, look over all five of them and see if they are.
Motion to table, motion to table.
By Commissioner McCrone, second by Commissioner Rogers, any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the audience? Opposition, none, five and O. All right, that'll give the staff and every one of the time and engineers to look over this and make sure it's all right. Now, uh, Madam Clerk, let's proceed with twenty-five, please.
Yes, sir. Sixteen seventeen twenty-five is the resurfacing of Iglenus Street, first bid is Robertson Roberts Incorporated. Base bid is a hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty cents. All right, the second and final bid is CW Roberts Contracting, to report they did not write the bid number on the outside of their envelope. Base bid is a hundred and sixty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eleven cents.
Hundred and, was that fifty-one or sixty-one?
Sixty-one, thank you.
Hundred and sixty-one thousand.
Okay. Sixty cents, okay.
That concludes all the bids for today.
For Atlantic Street.
Recommend and table.
Chairman.
Yes.
Question while we're tabling this, these people have all been at pre-bid qualifications, at everything they should meet. And I think, well, this will all be done, but my step in is going to lay time. I don't, we accept the bids contingent on approval of the staff and the engineers. If they approve it, it goes ahead, it doesn't have to come back here again, it, it would, it seemed to me we're doing double work for, for no reason. Uh, if they have a problem, they'll come back and tell us and we'll do what we need to do to correct it, but that's just from my little fifty years of experience in contracting. But you know, if that's going to be tabled for some reason, I don't particularly see why, but I'm with the crowd.
I guess we could do contingent on meeting the specs, if you want to, whatever y'all.
Well, I just go by what our, I want our engineers to look this over, I know these people there and that, that's the only reason.
The only thing you, you cannot award today, so, so all the staff wants is whatever the county commissioner wants. If you want to make a contingent, a lot of times, previous board didn't want to do that, but that'd be, that's time with us, make a contingent upon making sure they met all the specs.
Yes, sir, that would be and I think it would speed us along, I think it taking, putting in time that we don't need to put in.
We do have an issue like on Atlantic Street, I believe we have about a hundred thousand dollars in the pot to do Atlantic Street and that's going to be some changes, probably some serious changes on what we do there.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I.
But if we, if we can't, maybe with a contingency and then we see we can't get there, we'll bring it back to you.
Yes, sir, that would, that would be great.
Mr. Hammond.
I, I was just going to bring up, we didn't have the money for that last project. And we stopped opening bids in the board meeting eight or ten years ago because it's horrible to not be able to vet the projects beforehand. The, we, I'm, I'm all for speed, they've changed the rules, so if it's over a certain amount, I think it's a million dollars, you have to open them in the board meeting now and that's why. Beforehand, we would have opened them last Thursday or Friday in the clerk's office, we would have reviewed them over the weekend and had your recommendation on Tuesday, but I completely agree with administrator. We can, we can come back if we have a problem, if not, we can award.
Yes, Chairman, the contingency idea would be great.
I would appreciate that, I think it'll take some time out of the process and we can be moving on to other things.
And that would give, if everything meets the specs, it gives the chairman the authority to sign.
All right, so we're just doing a verse on this, let's take Atlantic Street and then we'll go back and undo Old Bay City. All right, Commissioner Whitfield, you've run broad up, you want a motion?
That's all I have, sir.
Well, you want to, you want to motion that for Atlantic Street?
I want a motion, I want a motion to accept the bids contingent on approval of engineering and staff.
That's on Atlantic Street.
Mr. Chairman, would that be the low bid?
Do what now?
Uh, the low bid contingent on it being.
Yeah, we're accepting the low bid. If it meets the specs, all right, all, uh, all right, I hear a second, we're talking Atlantic and then we got to go back and undo. Because we've already motioned to table, proved it five and O. Only, I have a second on Atlantic Street. Second, there you go, thank you. Mr. Rogers, any further board discussion, anyone in the audience? All right, so, opposition motion passed five and O on Atlantic Street. Now, let's go back, who made the second, we're going to uh, don't do this too often, we're going to void the labeling of uh, Old Bay City Road and we're going to readdress it and let it fall under the same, is that?
Commissioner McCrone made the motion and Commissioner Rogers.
All right. Pull your, on this table. Table, we're talking about Old Bay City Road.
Yeah, I'll pull it.
All right.
No, I'll be, I'll, I'll make my motion contingent on meeting the specs.
Okay, there we go, so you, you're sending your motion on Old Bay City Road, now you want to, I need a second?
Yep.
Second, right back over here, Commissioner Rogers, all right, any other board discussion? Anyone in the audience, no opposition, motion passed five and O, thank you, sir. See, all right, ladies and gentlemen, we're down to item number eleven, uh, TDC. Anybody on TDC?
We're just here to codify what we.
Do what now?
We, we put this back on the agenda to codify what was talked about in the workshop, uh, we need the vote of the board to move forward with change of direction on that fifth penny, is, is where we're, where we're at.
On the fifth penny. All right.
I'll take, I'll take lead if you.
All right, Mr. Commissioner, Quinn, please.
I'll pass out a couple of papers here, got enough for the clerk over there. If you get a chance, just kind of, uh, let's look over just a, some, some photos of a sports complex, uh, in Franklin County. But I just want you to note on the second page, while you're looking at this uh, sports complex uh, information. It, it has down there where that the Franklin County Sports Development Council will also contribute to that uh, sports complex. You heard my spiel before about the uh, the Tim Street Ballpark fields, um, last week. Last week, I thought we had a, a great meeting with the, uh, the county and the city. And we all, we heard from both sides. And from my understanding from that meeting, what I'm hearing is that we're all in agreement to move forward. With the one cent, the sports complex, parks and recreation, uh, tax also known as the, uh, the fifth cent. Uh, I heard the recommendations from the administrator at that, at that meeting last week. And I've also had conversation with the, uh, with the, with the attorney. I just want to be clear. I still want to put heads in beds, still want to promote tourism. I still want to bring people, uh, to Gulf, to Gulf County. My question is this, um. Can't we at least try to do something, uh, for our community that's, that's also going to promote tourism? Um, that's also going to bring kids in from, from the region, um, to, to our destination here in, um, in Gulf County. And what I don't want to hear is somebody telling me that, uh, the community or our children aren't important. Uh, they don't deserve a renovated facility, uh, that includes baseball fields, softball fields, pickleball courts, tennis courts. Um, or, or whatever, um. The, the team comes back and say we can, we can use in Gulf County. Everyone, um, that comes in to Gulf County can enjoy these, uh, these facilities. Everybody that I've spoken to. Uh, have said, had told me, thank you. It's about time. Um, it's time to do something, um, at those ball fields or for Port St. Angel. But once again, this is not only for our community, it's also for the people that are coming in. Um, they're staying in the hotels or on the Cape, on St. Angel Beach. The older folks, they can come in and enjoy the pickleball, uh, courts, uh, play pickleball. So regarding the, uh, the fifth cent for parks and, um, recreation. I would like to make a motion to, uh, to, to, to direct the, uh, the staff, administrator, TDC, and clerk's office to, uh, freeze spending and disbursements from the fifth cent and to preserve the remaining anticipated revenue from the TDC fifth cent tax. With that motion, I want, I got a second part also on that motion that I want to add. If it's approved, if we approve it today, um. I want to, uh, motion to freeze the spending from the fifth cent simultaneously. Uh, I would like to request approval from the board, uh, to direct the admin staff with, with and guide the TDC in developing a schedule for reporting back to the commission. With a master plan that includes a formal budget for the projects listed, including the 10th Street Park. A scheduled phases for the park, for the park completion and its promotion and marketing plan. And a finalized interlocal agreement with the city with their commitments and pledges to the county for their partnership and cooperative effort to remodel the park. Before we, you know, so I'd like to hear from you all in reference to how you all feel also on, on this issue.
All right, now that is a form of a motion.
Yes, sir.
You've given. All right, gentlemen, I hear a second.
I'll second that for discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Second for discussion by Commissioner McCrone.
I have sat down with Mr. Yeager, uh, several times. He, he initiated the fifth penny. And if I could get Warren to come up and, and just tell us what it, what the intent of the fifth penny was originally. I think it'd clarify a lot of things, so.
Sure. Mr. Yeager, I was on the board at that time, so you go ahead. I think we served together on it. We did.
I think all of us over the years have had concerns with 10th Street Ballparks and, and, and the facilities that we provide here. Uh, not only for, uh, our local residents, but also for the visitors that, that come to our community. And so, uh, one of the things that I had wanted to do was try to alleviate some of those issues and, and develop a park. Well, I found out, uh, through talking with the attorney that we could initiate a fifth penny and probably do some of that along with marketing and, and, and publicizing the fact that we had a facility and, and, uh, and develop that facility. So that was initially what we wanted to do with that fifth penny is to, uh, at, at that time, too, we had a, a parcel of property that we were interested in actually building a total new facility on. And, uh, that was out across from the hospital. Uh, and, and I think over the, over the years, there was some discussion, especially amongst the folks that lived in town, that that was of concern to, to get their kids out across ninety-eight. And there was some concerns with safety and those type of things. So I think over, over the year or two that, uh, preceded after that, uh, there were more and more discussion on how do we, how do we improve what we have or how do we, uh, develop what we have? And I think one of the problems that we had at 10th Street at one time was talking about, uh, how do you, how do you fit all the things that you need in there to accommodate your pickleball courts and all the other facilities? But now there's also been discussion of extending the culverts that, that facility's built over. So you've got an awful lot of room from sixteenth street, street to 10th Street. But the original plan was for it to be for a, a facility.
Want to talk a little bit about the study that was, that was done originally, uh?
Yeah, after, after we initiated the fifth penny and Jennifer can probably speak more to that, but she had got someone to come down from, um, I, I, I don't know where they were necessarily from.
National Association of Sports Commissions.
And I think, uh, from what, in talking to Jennifer, uh, what they said was improve on what you had. Don't necessarily go out there to a new, to, to a, a, a new area and, and build that out. You already had some pretty good facilities. Improve on what you had. And so I think that's some of the ideas that come back to 10th Street and working with the city and improving this 10th Street. So, uh, but the original idea, you know, it was all about let's, let's get better facilities so we can, um, talk about tournaments and talk about other, other things that we can add, components that we could add into that, uh, to help the visitors and all those type of things.
Thank you, Warren.
Thank you.
Hang on. Go ahead.
Sure. Mr. Quinn, I think you know how I feel about kids. I've got a lot of grandkids, great-grandkids. And I also don't know anything about city limits. To me, it's just Gulf County citizens. I know there's home rule and so, you know, I don't think it's been amended since seventy-six, but it gives home rule a lot of leverage on these things. I certainly don't have the expertise to tell you about this fifth penny and how it works, but I think you would have to come down to some specific amounts and who's going to do what. I think the city should lead on this if that's possible. And that we played the second part. I mean, you can be involved as much as you want to, but we played a second part of trying to help finance and trying to help furnish the money. We need, I was all for trying to open this up and get some planning started. And my thought of doing that would be that, that's in your district and it's in Mr. McCrone's district. That we look at that fifth penny as our hundred percent. So that kind of is like twenty percent for each district. So here we are. It's your twenty percent and it's twenty percent if you wanted to dedicate that to a specific park or something, it's okay. If you need more help, we will still come in. If I got anything left. And anything that's in these districts would still be subject to the approval of this board. And to me, it, it does say about a sporting complex, but it's also spelled out very plain to me. It was all parks and we got all parks that are in a state of disrepair. It don't mean I'm not for you a hundred percent or for that. I just think it's a, it's a little bit complicated and it's going to be real easy to get out. I think it's something that's going to take, it may take four, five years to bring it about. We may have to phase it in one phase at a time doing what you're talking about. And I would have to count on the attorney and the staff to give me the adequate information that I need. Uh, and I don't want an audit of the TDC. I'm a fan of the TDC. They've done a tremendous job of bringing people in here, maybe a little too good. But I do concern myself when half of the money that's been collected on the fifth cent is gone. Or, and I'm sure it's all legitimate. I'm not even trying to, don't even want to insinuate that. But that's a lot of money and we certainly, I haven't seen that improvement in the parks that I'm associated with and I've, I've only been here a short while. I'm just saying that I want what's fair for everybody and if we can move ahead with what you're wanting to do, I'm counting on you and Mr. McCrone to guide us through this thing with equality for all. That's all I'm asking and it be clear that we know where we're going and how we're going to get there. So with that, I appreciate your effort.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just to clarify, before we leave out here today, where there's no, uh, Mr. Novak, as far as how the ordinance is written. Is there any problem with spending this money on a sports park?
Commissioner, there's not, there's not a problem. It's, it's what the ordinance directs this commission and the county to do.
I know we have to market the.
You have to market it, but, but the ordinance and the penny is to specifically go to parks and recreation for Gulf County. So it's not out of the box. It's the only box and it's where the money's to be spent in the county.
Mr. Hammond, just so we're clear on everything, we are not laying anybody off. As far as the TDC, we're not cutting salaries. We're not talking about that. We're going to clean the beaches. We're going to clean the bathrooms. Now, we just got to get there. We got to. I don't know what's got to be cut, but we got to get there. I, I support Mr. Quinn a hundred percent.
We're going to follow through with whatever direction the board gives us. And, uh, the, the, the current budget that we have, we're going to have to adjust a little bit. We, 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 we set aside that million going forward. Motion is to set aside everything and, and is that freeze immediate or at the end of the fiscal year? It doesn't matter to us. Just tell us and we'll get where you want us to be.
Uh, Ms. Hammond, I, I think it's, uh, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I shouldn't ask for permission. I, I think, uh, everybody wants the same thing. I think it's an awfully big bite to try to take it one time. I think we need to spoon feed ourselves with this. If we can come out with the money, start a preliminary plan. I don't think we have to have a plan for the whole complex. But get something started. Get some engineering or whatever input these two gentlemen can have. And, and some money that we can put into that, that we can get started. I think you'll see it improve as you go along. But to try to sit here in one day and take this whole thing in when we none know what it's going to cost, we none know where it's going. Well, you know, if we could get a specific and, and, and start with a, even the planning stage, they can give a general layout, a conceptual drawing, but they don't have to give the whole thing in detail. And you come back and give us an amount of money and then the attorney can, uh, tell us if we can take that amount of money out in whatever way to do it. I'm all for it. I just see something here. If we're not careful, we can walk off into the swamp not knowing how we're going to get out the other side. And, uh, that's just not my nature, so, but I'm certainly in support of it. I want that to be understood. Just want it handled right. Thank you.
Based on the motion, that we're going to set that money aside, nothing going to be spent until this board directs it to be spent and how it directs it to be spent.
Okay, anyone else here? For, is your second stand, Commissioner? Second stand. Are any other board members in discussion on Commissioner Quinn's motion? Are anyone in the audience?
My read on the motion is, I want to freeze the fifth penny and I'm assuming that's today.
Yes.
And I guess my concern would be, once you do that, that means we're not going to be spending that money for what we hadn't budgeted that money for. And then starting October, it's going to be a new year. And if we're going to use the whole fifth penny towards parking and recreation, that's what we're going to do. But it means there's no desire to, to cut personal, there's no desire to quit cleaning bathrooms and picking up trash and cleaning the beach. So I don't know anything but marketing and Jennifer can help us out if there's something above and beyond that. We're going to have to cut somewhere because if we're going to take all the money to do something new with it, we're going to have to cut somewhere. So if we could have that little bit of discussion, or if that's what you're asking for, plus come back with you with a plan of what we cut, that'd be fine, too. But I know we're not going to quit cleaning restaurants because we have forty, forty something restrooms we clean every day and sometime multiple times a day. We, um, we, we clean over a hundred trash cans a day. Take the trash out. We have a limited number of, of staff working the beach and, and, and the TDC. There's no desire to cut staff. So, but we're going to have to trim somewhere. So me not knowing any different, we probably going to be looking away at marketing. The, our county marketing we've done. So, I mean, if we're on the same page, then we'll go forward with it.
I, I know it's not going to be popular, but I'll, I'll throw it out there. We spent two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars last year on a consultant. I think you got to start there. I, I don't see no other way to get where we're going to get. That's, that's, that's just. And, and in two and a half years, we've paid this consultant over seven hundred thousand dollars. And I think if you want to get where we want to go, that's, that's where we got to start.
That's very clear. Board members, the staff and all, we're going to continue the services. We're just going to monitor this fifth penny and freeze the portions of it. It doesn't apply to this services, just like the beach. There's a certain percentage of it, of the penny goes to salaries and this vehicles and operation there. But there's some things in there we, we're going to just have to trim it down.
Just to follow up where I'm clear. We're going to.
Real clear.
We're going, we're going to do exactly what the board wants. We're freezing the fifth penny, one hundred percent of it today. You want us to come back at the next board meeting with a plan to move those salaries and those other expenditures out of that fifth penny for the rest of the year because we've got several more months in this fiscal year. To other places in the budget, the budget amendment, come back with recommendations, or how do you want us to proceed with that?
I would, yeah, I would add, yeah, let's, let's come back with recommendations, um.
I'll meet with Ms. Jenkins and her staff and we'll come back with something and present it to Mr. Butler and have it for you at the next meeting. But I think we've got a game plan.
Good deal. Let me, I don't know here. I got to go out here to these people. Anyone in the audience, before we vote, we got a young lady right here. Come up, please.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. I am Allison Gerlach. I am on the board of the TDC. I also am an employee and an owner of Pristine Properties Vacation Rentals in Gulf County. We are the largest bed tax collector in the county. We represent homes from St. Joe Beach, where really Mexico Beach, all the way through Cape San Blas and Indian Pass. I've been on the TDC through the good, the bad, the ugly. I don't know how many years I've served, but it's been a lot. And I can say this, that I've never been more proud to be on this TDC as I am now. We have done, made great strides that have been commended by you, Commission, as to what we've done for tourism in our county. I'd like to speak on this because I am a local person. I have kids that live here locally that participate on the ballpark that you're talking about. Not only do I have two children that play, I sponsor a team, I coach a team, my husband coaches a team. So we're very much involved, not only in the baseball, but in the softball, at the schools and everywhere. My biggest concern, and I am very concerned, is that we are moving away from what got us here today. I have been accused of not supporting the local community by caring more about collecting bed tax. And that's probably true. I do care about collecting bed tax because what that has done for me and my family and my staff and my staff's family is allow me to. I have eighty people that I pay, whether it be contract or employed. I have three businesses now that have grown and been created because of tourism in this county. These people, and then another twenty-five vendors that I pay on a regular basis that are not employed by me. That's my electricians, pest control, HVAC, whoever it may be. They all have children that also participate on this ballpark or complex. I was on the board when we voted for the fifth penny. I was very much in support of it. It's my life. It's what I've done. It's my life. It's what I've done. I played high school sports. I played college sports. Like I said, I participate. Um, but it was at a time that we needed more. We needed something else to bring tourism to our county. And I believe we've done that. I think we've proven that point, that we can bring visitors to our county to enjoy. Not, we needed something off the beach. That was kind of the idea. We have that now in the theater, in downtown, in the Art and Cultural Center. Um, my fear is we are focusing so much on baseball and softball and the, if I'm not mistaken, the, the person who came in to do the consulting work said, "It's not baseball. It's not softball that is going to help us bring heads and beds." And that is what our board is tasked with doing. And in doing so, it allows us to have staff, to have families that can live here and participate in baseball, and coach and sponsor. That's, that's the trickle effect. That's, that's why, that's why we're here. That's, that's the, that's the, the goal of our board, is to create this trickle effect that helps the community. And I think that we've done a fairly good job in doing that. Um, so I would just make sure that with the fifth penny, it is directed to sports, sports complex, absolutely. Again, I voted for it to tax myself. But it's also, main focus is to bring heads and beds. And if we lose sight of that, those local kids that we keep discussing is the ones that we're gonna be affecting most negatively. Because when there are no jobs for their families to have in this community, because tourism, whether we like to admit it or not, is the drive right now. And if we can, if we lose focus in taking away from our marketing and our spending of bringing visitors here, what happens? What happens to those businesses? What happens to the shops? What happens to the restaurants? What happens to the parents of those kids that we're trying to support? Um, the other point I would like to make is, uh, my oldest daughter plays travel soccer. We go to Columbus, Georgia and Atlanta, Georgia every weekend. We stay one night. I, I would hope that when we're looking at this, we're looking at our product mix. Because I would venture to say we don't know, because we don't have the ability to know what our product mix is. But I would say it's a very high percentage of vacation rental homes. I believe we've got two hotels in the area with limited numbers of rooms. So when we are marketing this sports complex for visitors to come, we gotta make sure we've got a place for them to stay. Because nine times out of ten, our properties are gonna have to rent a seven-night minimum in the summer.
So move to a stand time, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay. So they, we have seven-night minimums in the summer. The tournaments we go to, and maybe I don't know, are not seven nights. And if they lose out, who's gonna, who's gonna give them their money back? You know, because, and then what, what type of experience does that give that family of Gulf County? Um, again, the idea originally was to be outside of the summer season. We, a three-night soccer tournament in February would be fantastic over President's Day weekend. But are, are these fields that you're looking for, is that what we're, what we're focusing on? Is that what we're geared towards? We've gotta make sure that what we build and how we build it fits within the county and the community that we have built so far. So I just wanna make sure that we are focused on continuing to market our county, to not just ballparks, but the beaches, the waterways, Gulf, uh, North Gulf County with the Dead Lakes, kayaking paddleboard. Down seventy-one, when you're coming and you see these visitors coming, they're bringing their paddleboards, they're bringing their kayaks. Those are the complexes that are attractive to them, that they can come and stay any time of the year, with their families or without their families. So we just need to make sure that we are staying focused on what that, what we are legally ta- tasked to spend that money on.
Mr. Chairman.
That's all.
Ma'am, I compliment you, uh, and I mean this with all integrity. Uh, after you've gotten through here, I don't know whether you're for or against it. You're as good as Jim Conley.
Well, I'll be honest.
And then blew it down, so I, I don't know where you stand exactly on this, and, uh...
Well, good. I did my job.
You know, it sounds like all the beds are full. And then I hear about all your ball playing and all the stuff that you're for, and we all for kids and all of that, but then I kinda hear that, well, we don't need to spend it on this complex and on these other things. And I would agree with you partly. It needs to stay focused on what's working. But it's gotta cover everything, so, uh, I, I compliment you on your, uh, persuasion there. I don't know what to do with it, but thank you so much.
Well, you know, to be honest with you, I don't, I don't know what I'm for, because I do participate in this community, and I take great pride. I'm born and raised. Take pride in this community.
Yeah.
But, but to take money away from what has gotten us to the growth that we've come to today is where my concern lies.
Could I ask you another question, not to put you on the spot? How many of these, uh, TDCs do you have knowledge of, or their budgets or this sort of thing, any?
I don't, but I get, I don't. And I, I would ask that same question of you guys too.
My question has been and been since the first time I ever heard of it, because I have never heard of any budget anywhere that had a sixty percent administration and marketing cost. Uh, uh, maybe it need to be eighty, but I've never heard of anything on that level.
Okay.
And then I find out that on the fifth penny, I would think everything would be marketed and take care of about the sixty percent. But now here on the fifth penny, we gotta market again out of that. Now, I hope so. I, we need some real professional guidance from Mr. Novak and our staff, and I would also like to make sure that we give, uh, the, the, the TDC chairman there a chance to come up here and express herself openly on this, that you don't feel like you walked into a wasp nest. Uh, I value what you've done. You've done a great job of getting people here. It may be too big, too, too good. But I would certainly like to see a, a line item budget on that first sixty percent. See if, to see if I felt that there was any words to cut or any other way to do it. May not be. I don't know that. And that's the whole thing. I don't know, just like this young lady don't know. So I'm through, Ms. Chairman. Thank you.
Well, I think, uh, let me say this, uh, I think in Commissioner Quinn's motion is the first step toward just elaborating on there.
Right, right.
Quinn is to, there, so, thank you, Allison.
Yeah, yeah, Allison, I, just, I've sat down with Jennifer several times. And I have no opposition. I've told her this. We know where we wanna get. Those ballparks are always terrible shape, no doubt about it. That complex needs to be redone. How we get there, if, if we do it through grant, whatever, we just need to get there. Uh, you've been here all your life. I, I know that, and you've played ball. My, my boys play ball. We all, you know, we, we've been here. But we just gotta get there. It, it's a shame that, that, I was looking at this, what Sandy handed out a while ago. This complex, I guess this is in Carabao?
Carabao, yes.
With the complex they have in Carabao and what we have down here, it, it, it's a shame, it, you know.
Can I ask something about that? Getting there with this ballpark, is that gonna bring more visitors to our community?
I can't answer that, but I mean, our obligation is just to market it. That, that's our obligation. You, you know what I'm saying?
And our obligation as a TDC board is to bring more visitors to the county.
I agree with you. I agree with you. And our obligation is, is to market this complex. And, and there's nothing set in stone as far as if it's gonna be soccer fields, you know, just baseball and softball. We hadn't said, none, none of that's been set in stone.
Okay, and that's...
So, you know, we could do a mixture. I talked to Jennifer about some adventure stuff down there, you know, and so...
Well, I think that's what I'm asking, is making sure that we keep in mind what brings visitors to the community, what our product mix is that we can hold here. Because hosting those tournaments during the summer really may not be best for, for what we've got, for the units that we have on rentals. So that's, I mean, we're full in July. But, um, we've got eleven more months out of the year to make that happen, so...
Let me add some, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Allison, like, he, he made some great points, and, uh, like I say, uh, we didn't, I, I want to be clear. We didn't say we're just cutting your zero, you done, marketing period. Uh, 'cause we, we talking about that fifth cent. We still got three other pennies that we work off of, right? If I'm not...
That's correct.
Okay, so, so...
Got four pennies. One of them, four pennies there marked for the beach and there primarily. You got three pennies now, Commissioner.
And I'm, I'm pretty sure those other three pennies are marketing, money coming out for marketing, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so, I mean, we just don't, we just trying to deal with this one cent to try to make some, you know, at least try to make something happen for, for the kids. Like I say, the vision, the goal from the start was sports complex. Mr. Jaeger laid it all out in the front, and somehow to me, that vision got, got gone. We, uh, let me say this. We appreciate what the TDC is doing, uh, and I want you all, and I, like I said, continue to mark. We still want heads and beds. We still want people to come enjoy the Gulf, live unpacked. We still want all those people to come here. When Mr. Jaeger said the goal was sports complex, we know we can't build what's in Panama City or... We just want something renovated, redone, so that not only our kids, but when the visitors do come, they got a place to come to. I got a guy, he don't, he's not from here. They moved out here. He plays pickleball. He says there's no way in Gulf, no, there's nowhere in Gulf County to play pickleball. So one of my ideas was, hey, if we gonna redo Thames Street, put some pickleball courts where these people can come and enjoy. So I got Snowbird, guy comes to basketball games off. They talk about pickleball. So I'm just saying that if we can take this fifth cent and move forward with what we're trying to do, it's not gonna take, hopefully it won't take us ten years. Hopefully it won't take us, you know, it might take us phases to get there. We might have to trim a little bit, take a little bit here and there, but we want, let, I'm gonna be clear. We, we wanna continue to market what you guys are doing.
Can, with that, can you, with your planning, can there be input from ta- the, the bed tax collectors that are, that have the product that you're trying to sell? Because our product may not be your sales goal, and, and I, we can't change, we can't change the immediate landscape of what we have to offer as rentals.
Right, well, and then I'm gonna say this, you, you mentioned state tournaments. I know we cannot host a state tournament here in Gulf County, but we can't host a district tournament. We could get the regional kids here.
But where are they staying?
Well, this, this is my thing. We getting ready to host a region, a district tournament here, um, in a few weeks.
Yeah, Weewall, Franklin County and Calhoun County. Where are they gonna stay?
But they gonna spend money in Gulf County. The idea is to get, is to get them, to help, to get them here. Hopefully when they get here, they, they'll spend money in Gulf County.
But the, but the task of the TDC and the bed tax that is collected is to be spent to market the county, to bring more visitors to the county.
Right.
So if we're spending that on people that we know are not going to be spending the night, are we doing what we are supposed, legally obligated by the state to do?
Right, right. Well, we want you, we, like I said, we want you to continue to market it, heads and beds. We don't, we don't know if they'll stay. You don't, you don't know that.
That's, that's my point.
But you don't, but we don't know. So I, I would say let's, let's, let's move forward, and I would love to have you all some input on, um, the direction that we're going in.
All right. Okay, thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else in the audience or not, I gotta reach over here to the attorney, and we got a motion on the floor to vote on. Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just, uh, to Ms. Gerlach's points, um, which, which, which asked the questions of the commission. I know we've had three meetings on it, one workshop and two county commission meetings. But I just, and again, I, I always go back and it's giving you a little back, 'cause three new commissioners, the history of it in two thousand fourteen, your TDC board had several meetings about this. It was, I don't know if it's a unanimous vote, but it was, I think it was ten-plus votes of unanimous of the board to recommend to this county commission to adopt this penny. We wrote the ordinance, you had your public hearings, and you adopted it. Since then, the staff at the TDC and the TDC Advisory Council have formed a subcommittee. So to Allison's point and to Sandy, what you were saying before, you have a structure in place. You've already created a subcommittee through the TDC that examines this issue, recommends things to your advisory board, and your advisory board and executive director come and present them to you. So there is, there is an ability for that public input. And I know the motion that you've made, Commissioner, is to have the staff work with the various departments, and it would be the recommendation, I think, of the staff that the proper function, a piece of that puzzle would be that subcommittee that you formed two and a half years ago. And in that discussion is hotels. In that discussion is what is the marketing plan. In that discussion is what is the budget. In that discussion that they started two and a half years ago when you gave them this responsibility, is if it has changed, what is the, how are you going to adapt to it, and what is the plan going forward? So I think it starts at the ground level from your subcommittee that works for the TDC, which you have a sports and recreation subcommittee, that they report to your TDC advisory board. Your advisory board provides input to the staff, and they all come back to you with a report. And those things that were just discussed are all part of that discussion, which is the product mix, which is what seasons, which is what are the amenities, what are the attractions, what are the facilities? And I think that's part of the input that you're gonna get, hopefully, from your TDC council and its subcommittee. And I think that's part of the whole, I don't know what your timeline is, but that's part of the process, I think, that you were talking about, Commissioner.
Good deal. All right, sir. Thank you, sir. All right, gentlemen, the motion's on the floor. You have a second. The opposition. Motion. Motion passes five and oh.
Did I hear second?
I seconded.
He was seconded, yes, and he, uh, for discussion, and his second stood. All right. Next order of business is, uh, public hearing support of Gulf County Agricultural. Who's gonna address that? You are. Come on, Leah.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Thank you.
As a requirement to the, uh, to the application for the, um, agricultural facility that we're applying for, I had to bring the resolution in front of you in a public hearing format.
Where is it? Show it to me. Did you?
Should be page seventy-seven and seventy-eight, I believe.
Okay.
Would you like me to read the resolution, or can I read it by title?
Why don't you just read it by title?
Okay. It reads, "A resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Gulf County, Florida, in support of Gulf County Agricultural Facility." Um, so I would just like to request that you approve the resolution and that the chairman is able to sign today.
Thank you, dear. Need a motion to approve the resolution.
So move, Ms. Chairman.
Uh, Commissioner Quinn's motion, here second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCrone. Any further board discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, if I might have some discussion with this, and probably will not be popular. But I lay it out as information that I think we should start to take seriously, start to consider. The grants are great, but getting a grant don't always mean that it's a good thing. I know it's hard, and I'm gonna support it. An eight-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for a building, okay. But we better keep in mind that with that's going to come certain expenses, electric upkeep. Uh, and you don't wanna, I don't know how many peoples on this man's staff, but, uh, probably three people. And when you build a big enough building, I don't even know where we'd be building it, uh, it's just natural, they wanna grow and staff and have enough people to fill the building. So, uh, while I'm not against it, I think on down the line that we gonna have to start saying, "We don't need this. We don't need this." We got empty buildings right now, if we needed that as a building. So the only reason we're taking it is for the eight-hundred-thousand-dollar grant. It may be a little shot in the arm temporarily for some construction and getting it built. But then it's gonna come a liability to this county for the duration. And I'm going to support that, but I just think every member of this board needs to start thinking very seriously just because somebody's can handle some grant money. I know my wife was a travel agent, and I tell you, free trips to Europe about broke me. So, uh, I know a little bit of how this works, uh, so I would just, I've done my part. I feel like I've laid out that there is some downsides to all of this, but you're probably not going to change it in the political world we're in now. So thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. All right. Any other board discussions? Anyone in the audience? The opposition, motion passed five and oh. Thank you, Leah.
Thank you.
All right. Now, ladies and gentlemen, we get into, we have, uh, one, two, two more items, and then we'll get into public discussion. Mr. Larry, are you still with us?
I'm still here, sir.
You ready to play the...
They like to put me last.
Popscotch game. Here we go, people. All right, Mr. Larry.
Oh, uh, we have a, uh, minor subdivision preliminary plat approval from your planning board, uh, that met last week. Monarch Beach is the applicant Denise Ferguson, trustee, RSO ID zero-six-two-six-eight-dash-zero-six-two-R, and also zero-six-two-six-eight-dash-zero-six-three-R, located in section seven township, nine south range eleven... nine south range, eleven west, Gulf County, Florida, off Cape Sandblaster Road. Eleven, a, and eleven lots subdivision consisting of eleven total units over four-point-one-nine-two-eight acres. And, uh, I wanna note something there. In the advertisement, the, the developer was proposing twelve lots, they have since then reduced that to eleven now.
So this is, uh, I have twelve lot, we have twelve lots. That has been reduced to eleven lots?
Exactly.
Okay, all right.
And I'll go ahead and read the recommend, recommendation.
All right, sir.
Uh, the planning board recommends to the B O C C by four-o vote to approve this preliminary plat for minor subdivision with eleven lots. And, uh, if you ask, anyone wants to come up and speak on the matter regarding quasi judicial?
All right, this time, uh, ladies and gentlemen, is anyone here that would like to speak in behalf of this? Anyone? You do, Jenna, come on up, please.
And Mr. Chairman, if you'd move forward and asking if she wishes to waive quasi judicial hearing?
You wish to do that?
I do.
We'll have to vote on that in just a minute, but that's great, okay. Go ahead.
So I'd move forward with a motion.
All right, give me a motion.
I made the motion that we waived.
Wave quasi. Got a motion by Commissioner Quinn.
Second.
I hear a second, here we got two seconds, that's good, we wanna move. Uh, Commissioner, we'll give it to Commissioner Rogers. All right. So move. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, that'll do, better. Go ahead.
My name's Gina Johnson, Lotus Engineering Environmental. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Ms. Denise Ferguson, um, for this eleven lot subdivision, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Um, otherwise, it's basically what, what Brett just said. The applicant decided to remove a lot from the subdivision after Brett had did, done the, uh, public notice, so that's the reason for the
From twelve to eleven?
Twelve to eleven, that's right. He wanted to, they wanted to make the, uh, golf fronts a little bit larger, so.
Well, that's great, that's good, that's good. All right. Anything else, Jenna?
That's it.
Good. All right, anyone else in the public? Pros, cons, ors, against? All right. Mr. Larry?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'll move forward, I'll read the recommendation of the board again for the, for the motion. Um, uh, the planning board recommends to the B O C C by four-o vote to approve this preliminary plat for minor subdivision of eleven lots, uh, consisting of a total of eleven units over four-point-one-nine-two-eight acres, um, so-called Monarch Beach subdivision. Uh, the, the hearing was properly, properly noticed. There was a waiver of quasi judicial hearing, myself, the planning board deemed, uh, the substantial completeness of the application and other procedural steps required in your LDR. So, I'd ask you, uh, for final vote.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, gentlemen. It was a four and oh, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Approval of this, and we're going from twelve down to eleven. All right, gentlemen, I have a motion for this, uh, approve this.
So move.
Commissioner Macron. Motion to hear a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Whit, Commissioner Whitfield. All right, any further board discussion? Anyone else in the audience? The opposition, none. Motion pass five and oh. Thank you, Mr. Larry.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, the next order of business is, Donna, are you here? Are you still with us?
I am.
Okay, well, will you, young lady kindly come on up? Oh, we doing good. We just about to end of the road here.
Okay, and we tabled this last time.
Uh-huh.
And I don't know what you came up with, but I found something very interesting.
Uh-oh.
This was regarding, uh, Seashore's Drive.
Seashore?
Seashore's Drive.
Drive.
And Ocean Ridge and Kristen's Curve in Gulf Air.
Yeah, yeah, I know where you're going.
And it all started with a two thousand fifteen county commissioners meeting where it was stated that, um, it would be left open until the, uh, sidewalk was built,
Mm-hmm.
and then close the access path automatically. Well, at that time, we decided it wasn't quite finished yet, so we couldn't move in that direction. But I really believe, after finding certain things, that, um, we can go forward with closing off that end of our community without even involving the county. Because in doing some more due diligence, I found that Mr. Ike Durin actually left one foot all the way around Phase Four as homeowner's property. The Homeowner Association property. And you all have the packet that I handed out, you should have a copy of it as well. And on this one page, in our, uh, in our, uh, covenants restrictions, it was written that the road will be dedicated to the county with the exception of one foot, which will belong to the Homeowners Association as indicated on the map. Now, on the next page is, um, O R one thirty-two, eight thirty-one, and you will notice that on Phase Four, there is one foot all the way around it that they left as homeowner's property. So we can close that without involving you at all in Seashore's Drive. Seashores will be open, it won't be a problem, and we, we will just put a fence up on that one foot of homeowner's property on our property along that area.
Donna, do you really want to do that?
Yes, sir.
You do?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Then we gonna have to go through the legal part of it.
It's gotten to the point now where cars are coming through there.
Yeah, we, we can address that, and let me, let me, I'm just being a chief. Yeah, I've, I've dealt a lot with the people in Gulf Air, and, uh,
It's, there's two entrances.
Part of Gulf County.
Yeah.
And a lot of taxes.
There are two, two entrances, two Gulf Air, and that was the way it was planned. Two entrance off, entrances off of ninety-eight.
But with this sidewalk, it had multiple uses, that, the DOT restricted that down, just strict to a sidewalk. My observation from being out there is a fact that, and I agree, we're not gonna, we're not gonna ban it right away, I just, I don't think it'll take a lot of action to do it, I don't think this board's gonna go that route, I can't speak for them. But you know who uses the path?
Uh, cars, golf carts.
Right, that's, I'd say. People in Gulf Air with golf carts, they can come down through there, they can get to the convenience store, they can go right down, uh, Americas, flipping out of the dollar store, and never have to get out on the highway. It's a more convenience to use this as a, let's say, as a, a golf cart, or a bicycle, or walking to the people in Gulf Air.
We're gonna take a vote. It passed last time. We had a hundred and twenty-two people in Gulf Air that wanted to, to close that off. And we will have to take the vote again, make sure that they will vote for it. And then, um, a property assessment as well, because it's gonna cost approximately twenty-five thousand dollars to do it. Because we're gonna run the fence all the way from the water waste treatment plant down to the retention pond.
Well, we may have to address, that may wind up in the courts or something, we'll see.
Well,
And I don't know what you read here.
You have it in front of you.
Go over and research it with an attorney or someone.
He has the information as well.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, Smolko, um, just three things about her comments. Uh, first, I don't have it, but if you wanna give it to me, I'll be happy to review it.
Okay.
You left it over there.
So you, you put it here this morning?
Yes, I gave them to her.
Okay, so I'll be happy to read it after the meeting, but I certainly can't give you a response on your claim of title. Second of all, um, for any association in Gulf County, my recommendation as the attorney representing this board is always to work with the county commission versus against, or telling them what the association's gonna do. Um, inevitably, in the eight years I've worked for you all, at one point or another, the commission becomes very helpful, and always looks to cooperate and assist any homeowners association, including Gulf Air, which is one of your largest in Gulf County, so if you're taking a vote, I would certainly encourage you and your board to hopefully work with the commission and staff versus, you know, providing them some ultimatum or mandate. The third thing is to keep in mind, the picture you just showed, because I haven't looked at your title work, but that cul-de-sac that you showed on the fourth phase, that cul-de-sac is in the county's right of way, so.
That cul-de-sac is not ours.
Okay. The, there, there's issues with that, and it's in the county right of way, so I'll be happy to look at your paperwork, and I'm always happy to work with you and your, 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 your association. But I would caution the board and the association versus, you know, putting some, some ultimatums or mandates out there. I'll work with them, we'll look at the title work and the paperwork that she's provided this morning, and we can come back to you at the next, you know, meeting and discuss amongst the commission, so we can all find a cooperative effort to find out what works for the commission and also for the association.
It wasn't meant to be an ultimatum.
You know, that's fine, but I just, I don't, I'd rather have, and I would just recommend, on behalf of the commission, that the association doesn't take some affirmative step or a vote
Right.
until you know, and we all have a discussion as to the legal rights entitled to the property, the access rights, the road that's adjacent to it, and the county's right of ways, because the cul-de-sac runs right through it.
This, uh, Seashore's Drive runs past both streets, that dead end right there.
Okay.
So, in all actuality, we were not encroaching on two Seashore's Drive.
Yeah.
And the cul-de-sac is not ours. It was put there by the county, but it is not ours. It's part of Seashore's Drive, actually.
But I think that those are all good things that we can hopefully work through and discuss, and figure out what Commissioner Rogers and his district, and how we can
Yeah.
come up with a solution for your next meeting.
Okay, could, yes, can I come back next meeting?
Yeah, well, why are you right there? Mr. Butler, has DOT gave you that, uh, let me see how to say this. Has the sidewalk been completed and DOT has, and we've signed off on it, or is it still?
Um, it is not complete.
It's still in construction, okay, well then that answered metal.
There's that one, uh, what do they call it, where the, the creek goes underneath the estuary that goes out, they're working on that still.
The asphalt ditch. There, wait, there.
Yeah, and that.
But the question I asked was, it, they, they're not completed, so we, we got some time here.
Okay. We do, but
All right.
it takes a long time to get this in order. And I don't wanna go too far forward as in taking a vote and pursuing, uh, the monies until I know exactly that we can do what we would, the plan is.
All right.
So we'll, uh, Mr. Novak will look at all the information.
He will.
And I will return next time.
Good deal.
Is that good?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Whoa, here, we done.
The microphone.
There you go, all right. Ladies and gentlemen, let me let Ms. Donna get back her beat there. We're on the final now, we're going to public discussion. I have one request come before the board of Mr. William, is that Cooper? Cooper? Cooper?
Cooper, ma'am.
Cooper, Cooper. Here we go. Hey, Beacon Hill Street, Mr. Cooper, give this young lady right over here a name and address, please.
Okay.
And I'll pass this on to you.
And I printed some things, 'cause I'm a little concerned I might
That's fine.
So, this is just the highlights of what I'm talking about, and it's got my, uh, address and phone number on it.
Yes, sir. Hey, sir, would you give one of those, and excuse my language, just give one of, give that to her also, please, thank you.
My name is William Cooper. I live in Beacon Hill, and I wanted to thank the commissioners for, I have been listening, you do a lot of work.
Thank you, sir.
You're very, you ask, you ask good questions, you think about things, and I appreciate it. I, my great-grandfather Tate built our beach cottage a little over a hundred years ago. And, uh, it was one of the first three cottages in Beacon Hill. You had to take a boat to, uh, Beacon Hill from Port St. Joe, there weren't, uh, roads back then. And I've been coming all my life, now I've retired here, I'm a, uh, registered voter. I wanted to pre, uh, thank Jimmy Rogers for listening to me for probably twenty or thirty minutes, he's a good listener. But my concern is not just for myself, it came to my attention because it happened to me, but I think it's happening to a lot of people. And in this discussion, uh, today, I think a lot of acknowledgement is that the TDC has done a very good job here. And that's true. And there's been a lot of discussions and meetings, but I'm not sure how much the residents have been included in those meetings, because, maybe they have, I just don't know. But what's going on is, in essence, when you have weekly rentals, you have what otherwise is a nice neighborhood, that's why people come here, but it's like a unregulated hotel suddenly is right next to you. Uh, most of the houses, uh, where I live were built by my great-grandfather, my grandfather, my cousins. That's how I grew up. So, what I'm wondering, and now I've got floodlights coming through my, uh, windows, weddings, uh, uh, I have had speakers thirty feet from my front porch, uh, karaoke in the middle of the night. But even if you say, okay, the noise, noise ordinance begins at midnight, I talked to the sheriff's office, and the deputy said, okay, at midnight, the noise ordinance kicks in. But if they blast you out of your residence all day long, okay, then they have to be quiet at midnight, you get a few hours sleep, and the next day it happens again. Now, this is rare, it doesn't happen all the time. And it's dependent on the owner of the, um, the weekly rental. So.
So move. Okay, go ahead, go on, that's just procedure.
It depends on the, the owner of the weekly rental. Most are very nice. Uh, most, uh, tell the people that are renting, hey, this is a residential area, be careful for the residents. Uh, have a good time, but don't bring in forty people and have big wild Panama City parties here in, in the neighborhood. Uh, most is not a problem, but some it is. This guy that lives next to me, he has apartments up north, I, I guess he's a millionaire, he's, uh, he's interested in his income, and I've talked to him personally, I welcomed him to our neighborhood, and he said, uh, told me frankly, he said, really, I'm interested in the income, I'm not even gonna talk to people who rent about taking care of the neighbors, because it might dissuade some people from renting from me. We don't ha- and then I learned, there's really no controls, there's no, it's really like an unregulated hotel that can plop right down next to anybody here in our community. And we love it here. So, I, I guess just as one lone resident, I'm bringing it up. I don't know the answer, but it affects us. We've been living here for generations, and I, I'm not saying don't rent, I'm saying yes, but how do we peacefully coexist?
William, let me ask you a question here.
Yeah.
Do you know the rental agency that are, is these apartments through an agency?
It's through his kids.
Through his kid, but I'm talking about an agency.
Yeah, they have an agency, but they like to party there too. So that's why they got him to, to buy. I, I've tried every avenue, yeah, I've tried. And they, and he just said, hey, if you wanna change the law, go to the county commission. I di- I didn't wanna change it, I'm not even trying to change the law, I'm just bringing it to the commission.
Need some help on some noise.
I, I just, I'm one resident, and if it's happening to me, in Boulder, they banned it altogether, 'cause it's blown apart the neighborhoods. California, they've, uh, now instituted with weekly rentals, uh, that there's a, a fine of a thousand dollars if you disturb the neighborhood, and it just goes off against your credit card. Because it's not, people are people statistically, and most of them are good. But sometimes they're, they don't care about the neighbors, and some owners don't care. And when people come, it's week after week after week, and they're here for a good time. And they're not even, some of them thinking that they're in a residential area, even though you see houses, they're thinking everybody's here to party, like it's Panama City. And it's slowly rolling in from Mexico Beach down into Gulf County. I, I talked to a lady on the beach, and she said, they used to go to Mexico Beach, but now it's too, uh, where they stayed, it's too, uh, boisterous, so now they go to Gulf Air. But, so it's happening, slowly happening, and I'm bringing it to the commission's attention.
Let me, let me offer a suggestion, and we, I'll go, I don't have all the answers here.
Yeah, I don't either.
Why don't, why don't you do this?
Yeah.
Find out who the agency is, the rental agency, contact the TDC, and they may be, you know, registered, this rental agency may be registered with the TDC, or, or, you know, registered as a bed tax collector, may not. But we can start from there,
Okay.
and see what we can do, and see if we can give you some help, and the neighborhood some help there, because, uh.
Appreciate that. Appreciate that. I put on the bottom of this just a couple, this is what I asked the owner. I said, could you just put in your advertisement, uh, something like, please have a good time, but know that you're in a residential area. Please respect the peace of the neighborhood. No, he wasn't gonna do that. Uh, and I'm not saying he should, but I just bring it to the attention. Could, maybe we could have, and some kind of thoughts in that direction, cause again, maybe five years from now, we lose our way of life. It's too late. I don't know.
Commissioner Rogers, that's out in the, any comments or anything there? Uh, people are gonna be people.
Yeah.
That's what I say.
I know, but what can we do? Cause there's no mechanism if you got bad actors. There's no mechanism.
We can hopefully.
Okay.
Find out who they're, contact TDC, they, uh, uh, contact TDC.
Okay.
And let, and if it, it is a rental agency, they're aware of, if it's not.
Okay.
We can get them, and let's, let's try that first, and if it, don't you, hey, come back and see us.
Okay.
Okay? Did you do that?
She's got your card right there.
Right there behind you. There you go. We're gonna get the ball rolling right here. Thank you, William. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that's all I have from uh, no one else submitted anything, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I think it would only be fair if we would give Ms. Jennifer time to uh let come up and give us any information about what's carried on here today. I'd just like to know if you're in favor of the complex, the sporting complex, what your feelings are. I feel like we've, I don't put a lot on you without giving you a chance to respond to anything, but if you don't want to, that's fine. I'll take that as an answer.
But Mister Whitfield, if I could, uh, and she can come up if she wants to, I think Ms. Summers is going to schedule on Thursday, or try to schedule on Thursday, individual meetings with individual commissioners to get, get some more feedback.
Fine.
We, we've got direction from the board on where we're going, but that, it, it may be better one-on-one. If you need to say something, that's fine, but, but we plan on trying to, to do that this week, if, if that's good.
Good information, and everybody be on the same sheet of music as near as we can. Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, it is over. Thank you, everyone.